All right, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council's special called meeting for Monday, August 11th at 2:00 to 2:00 PM at Radcliffe City Hall. It's being shared live on Facebook. If you can please rise for an invocation and can remain standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your abundant blessings. Father, we thank you for the mayor and the city council who make decisions for the betterment of this city. Father, we thank you for all of the people in this city and what they bring and we ask that you bless our service members both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed are we.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
It's sir. Bill? Here.
Brown? Here.
Deroche? Here.
Merle? Here.
Owens? President? Thompson?
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, we have new business. Can we have a motion to go into closed session for KRS 61.8101B, Acquisition, Sale of Property and Economic Development?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, folks, we are just going to excuse ourselves. We'll be back here in just a few minutes. We just have a couple items on the agenda we have to tidy up from last time, so we will be back shortly. Thank you. All right, I'll go back here in my office, I guess. All right, I'd like to go back into, do I have a motion to go back into our called meeting?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let it be known that no official action was taken while in closed session and at this time I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now in our called meeting. All right, let's see here. We'll try to move through some of this. Thank you all for being patient. Uh, thank you all for being here. I just want to recognize Mr. Joe Prather. It's been a long time since you've been in these chambers, sir.
Glad to be back.
You doing okay?
Pretty well.
Good, good, good to see you, sir. Thank you for being here. Um, all right, I'd like to start off. Chance, you want to come up? Chance, we got some annual budget meeting. Some updates you got on our annual budget. No, you know what? You gotta pull that mic, Chance, over to you and turn that switch on there. Is that on, Tim?
So, this is a proposed ordinance to amend the budget for fiscal year 24, '25, the budget that just ended June 30th. Typically something we always do around this time each year. Normally July meeting doesn't make the cutoff in time because most of our June payables aren't paid until the 10th of July, so it cuts it a little bit too close for the July agenda, so typically try to do it in August. Um, and this is just a, as you all know, we, the ordinance governs, you know, each of the departments and the totals that we allocate. And then typically, over the course of time, uh, there's actions, some actions are presented to the council that you all aware of on certain things that transpire over the year. And then there's other things that just are a result of operating expenses. So, to stay in alignment with the ordinance, uh, there are two departments of the six or seven that spent in excess of what was allocated by the council. So that's the purpose of this ordinance, just to amend those line items for those two departments. One of them's going to be admin, uh, the other one is economic development, planning and zoning, or planning and building. Uh, the good news is that, um, the amounts are very nominal in nature. For admin, um, the, the additional is about $50,000 and that's all when, out of about, you know, we budgeted 1.35 million, so we're only talking, that's a very, very small percentage. And the same is said with economic development, planning and building, um, the amount is only $30,000 more than was budgeted, so again, a very, very small portion. Uh, all the other budgets are okay and, um, and even on those two departments, um, because the, the budget is on what is spent, um, for the planning department, the overage basically is a result of increased cost, uh, to the contractor for electrical inspections. So the good news there is if you're spending more money to the contractor for outbound, for their percentage of fee, that means you're taking a lot more money in on the revenue side, which is the case. So it is an overage on expense, but then we took in significantly more on the revenue side of the budget for electrical inspections. So, like I say, it's really not really, there's no negative to it. On the administration side, uh, we did contract, um, it's kind of a similar situation, at least for part of it. Um, we contracted through a, um, third-party tax collector specialist for the first time this past year to kind of help us with some of our delinquent tax collections and some of the taxes that have been on the books for quite some time. Um, and those properties just having moved, you know, because of transfers and such. And there's always nuances where people pass away, properties, um, have abatements on them, you know, where we treat them for tall grass and they're just kind of in no man's land. So, we were able to, um, use, um, the third-party collector to help us. So, we paid him, there was a fee placed on taxes for his part of the fee. So as a result, when you paid him for his fees, uh, it's not like it cost us money because those same fees were added to the tax bill as an additional tax, no different than penalty, interest, or lien fees. So it isn't expense to him, but we got that money back on the revenue side, so anytime, you know, he got paid, we got paid. And as a result of using him, we, we actually collected a significantly more amount than we have in prior years for delinquent taxes. So, the net result was positive because we were able to get quite a few delinquent taxes off our books. Um, and then one of the other items that I just, uh, in the admin department there is, again, is unforeseen, again, a small item in relation to the size of the budget, you know, which was, uh, 1.35 million. Um, and a, a, a unit, an air conditioning unit went out at North Huron Hope, um, which obviously is unforeseen, it had to be replaced, that was about eighty, $8,500. And, um, again, these are all small amounts, but the way, as you all probably know by now, the way we do our budget is extremely tight, so there's not, anytime an unforeseen happens, it sometimes shows up because that's just how we set the budget. I mean, it's tight. Uh, there's not a lot of fluff in these accounts where there's a lot of, you know, spare contingency set aside, so when something comes up that's not budgeted for, that's why I'm in front of you, you know, asking for that. Now, the good news is, as I stated, a lot of the stuff, we got the money and on those that we didn't, um, as you all remember at budget time, um, we took in significantly more money in occupational tax, payroll tax, insurance premium tax that we anticipated. So, all of this has basically been covered.
Any questions? Any questions?
No.
All right, Chance, you want to hang out for a few minutes and then if you want to sit, I'm gonna bring Murray up real quick. Let you sit aside for a minute, just hang out. I know you want to go cut your grass. Yeah, just, no, over there. No, he dying to get down there and cut that grass. Hang out for Murray, come on up. Folks, what I'm gonna do on, uh, the agenda item two and three, I'm gonna hold off just real quick because those are gonna take a little bit. I've asked Murray to come up and we're gonna do number four, um, just to discuss that, and that's gonna be some planning items. Um, Murray, we've got two, we've got A and B, and that is a rezone application located on 28 or 238 Cedar Oak, it's Vine Grove, and then we got B, so I'll let you, that was just at the recent planning commission.
Uh, yes, so at our last planning commission meeting, we received a rezone application for 238 Cedar Oak Drive, which is Arlington Center, uh, part of Arlington Center subdivision Lot 3, and the applicant is requesting, uh, it be rezoned from a commercial zone to a residential 4R4 zone, and that was requested by Silvergate LLC. Um, they're requesting that 26.307 acres of a 48.791 acre parcel be rezoned. Uh, the property is currently classified as a farm. Surrounding properties consist of Fort Knox military installation, single-family residential, multifamily residential, manufactured homes, industrial use farms, and vacant land. The planning commission has recommended approval of the zone map amendment from commercial zone to R4 zone with conditions. The conditions are as follows. Security fencing shall be installed by the developer along the Fort Knox boundary. Downward-facing exterior lighting shall be installed by the developer. The conditions were requested by the Fort Knox Garrison Commander, and that is an attached letter that I included with this packet, uh, with the staff report.
But, by the way, the, uh, letter from the Garrison Commander's office, which was in the record, and which you guys have a copy, uh, the owner applicant agreed to those conditions during the hearing, so. Yeah, I, so just, just as a reminder, the planning commission, as you remember, they do not, uh, have the final say on zoning. The city council has the final say on zoning. You, as the city council, you're not required to follow the recommendation of the planning commission on any map amendment. Uh, you have options, and here are the legal options. You can review the commission's evidentiary record. That means all of the documents, any exhibits that are put into the record, the testimony received during the public hearing, obviously the city's comprehensive plan, uh, the planner's memorandum, which staff always does a report, and that'll be part of the record, too. You can review the record, you can agree with the commission's recommendation, you can review the record and make different findings than what the planning commission made, but you have to make factual findings. You can't just say, "We disagree." You have to say why, and you have to point to facts using the evidentiary record in order to do that. And, and we did have a trial-type due process hearing where all witnesses and parties were allowed to speak under oath and ask questions, and everybody got to say their piece, so that happened during the planning commission's public hearing. You also can have what's called an argument-only hearing where you have any interested parties come up and argue as to why you should follow or not follow the planning commission's recommendation. That type of hearing is very rare, we haven't really done that before, and that is a situation where there is no new evidence received by this body. So there's no new evidence, all it is, is people coming up and saying their piece, okay? And of course, you can, uh, you can have your own brand-new due process evidentiary hearing. You can totally redo everything that the planning commission did and then make your decision based on the evidence of record. Now, why you would want to do that, I have no idea, right? That's why we have a planning commission. And the arguments were made, quite frankly, during the public hearing. So I think everything you have is in front of you. And if anyone sends additional correspondence, you can look at that. If it's different from what's already in the record, I say you need to be very careful looking at that because I, I don't want us to open up doors for a new public hearing or a new argument-type hearing if that's what you guys don't want, okay? Now, the planning commission record on this one, and I'm taking a little extra time to explain it because I think you need to know the facts, this public hearing was held in the middle of July, and because the first Thursday of the month, which is when zoning normally meets, planning commission normally meets, was July 3rd, well, that's a problematic date because of the holiday. So, uh, for various reasons, including that, they had a special meeting in July. The first vote on this issue of the planning commission, and we only had four commissioners at that time, the vote was a tie, two in favor, two against. Kentucky law is the planning commission retains jurisdiction over any such tie vote matter for 30 days. So the way the calendar fell, they met again on August 7th, which was within the 30 days. So I told Murray and planning staff, "Put that item back on the agenda," and I told the commission, "You don't have to do anything, but you, it's gonna be on the agenda because you still have jurisdiction. It doesn't go to the city council yet." So, we can read it off the agenda, someone can make a motion, go from there, everybody can sit there like lumps, whatever you want to do. Planning commission made a motion to approve, and it was a unanimous four-to-zero vote to recommend approval. So the two that voted previously to not recommend approval changed their minds and voted to recommend approval. So that's what happened on August 7th. So you have unanimous approval. We also had our two new, uh, planning commission members, but they did not vote, uh, is my understanding, because they weren't there during the public hearing, so. That is the background of that. Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Can you say again, one of the options as far as, because I can read this, I can see what the, uh, Garrison Commander, uh, wrote, obviously we weren't in the meeting, there was obviously some discussion, and there is, um, some feedback that's had or we wouldn't have the letter from Fort Knox. So what are you saying as far as an option so that we can hear? I mean, we can get records, we can review records, can we talk to the planning commission? Or, I guess for me personally, um, outside of just reading it, because reading the letter from Fort Knox without actually being there is a little concerning. Two, two, and then it goes to four, is a little bit like what happened. So just getting some of this and not having any ability to talk to the parties that are wanting to do this, I guess it's making me just a little bit nervous about it.
Well, I would say that is a part of zoning because you have the option to redo everything and to hear people submit evidence and make arguments during a full-blown evidentiary hearing. But again, that's why we have the planning commission, that's why they did that. You can have an argument-type hearing, but those were the arguments that were made already. Uh, Mr. Turner was here for the owner applicants, he made his arguments. There was a representative from the Garrison Commander's office who spoke.
That's what I was gonna ask, okay.
And basically, they introduced their letter into the record and basically restated what was in the letter, and they also made a couple of other additional comments.
Okay.
Uh, the letter from the Garrison Commander's office stated to the, to the city, "If this rezoning is accomplished, if it's changed, we would like two conditions to be met."
All right.
One condition was a certain specification of security fencing that had barbed wire on it and was seven feet or something like that. And then downward-facing lighting that would, in the rear, that would be night-sky compliant. Because the Fort Knox boundary adjacent to this property is only a portion of the property, it doesn't completely, you know, it, it's not a large boundary, but the installation is a, is an adjacent owner, so.
Okay.
And the applicant agreed to those conditions during the public hearing.
And this is an environmental impact study that was done to discuss, um, how to better build around the installation to ensure both quality development, but also protecting the mission at Knox. So this is kind of where this.
And, and that, that CUP document, um, it, it is something the planning commission considered, but it is not binding on the planning commission.
Okay.
And it is not binding on the city council. So it's one of those situations where everyone wants to get along, right? In theory, we want to get along with, uh, Fort Knox, we want to get along with our residents, we want to get along with our business residents and citizens, we want them to get along with the installation, we want to be one big happy family, right? But on zoning issues where you have property owners that have rights, and they have a right to come forward and ask that their property be rezoned, and in this instance, um, the property was already zoned commercial. So, the property owner could have gone ahead and used the property in a commercial way and not had these conditions on them. And that's what the applicant said during the meeting. So, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Merle. My recommendation is, longtime city attorney and sitting here through all the planning commission public hearings and meetings, is we've got a good planning commission. Um, and feel free to look through the record, um.
Yeah, you have a week.
You, yep, and so, you know.
And you can meet with Murray.
You, you can do that and review the record, and if you have questions, you can certainly ask. What, what you cannot do is go out and interview witnesses.
Right.
You cannot, in my opinion, you cannot go to the planning commission and ask them, "Why did you do this?" You can't go to witnesses and ask for more information. That's now. That being said, the law is a little fuzzy on, do citizens have a right to approach their city council people? And the answer is yes.
Okay.
But I think you just need to be very careful, right? Because property owners have rights. Trying to be delicate here, but, right? Now, what, what is not allowed is backdoor collusion, right? Uh, if you would be ashamed to have that conversation in the sunlight, then maybe you shouldn't be having the conversation, right? That's with anything, right? So, uh, my recommendation is, because it was unanimous, uh, because everyone had a right to say their piece and present their evidence, and because of the current zoning of the property, uh, if you look, you know, it's kind of a commercial island out there, and maybe that's not the best use of the property. And so that was the argument by the applicant. And of course, Fort Knox wants to protect the integrity of its installation, they don't want to have any sort of conflicts with neighbors, they don't want people complaining about noise, they don't want people complaining about lights. You know, there is a certain level of inconvenience or nuisance, if you will, that we all have to put up with. We have to put up with a little bit from Fort Knox, Fort Knox has to put up with a little bit from us, right? So that's just, that's what happens in a civilization, right? Neighbors have to get along, and sometimes it's, it's a little tougher, you know, easier said than done.
So how far is the buildings that they are commercial and they wanted to zone in, apartments, right? Houses? How far is from the Fort Knox?
Well, they, they're, they're not apartments. R4, so that's duplex at most, right, Murray?
Correct.
Right, so it's either single-family or duplex, these are not apartments.
So how far are they from the installation? How far apart? How much do they leave in between?
There's not a development plan, is there, Murray?
So, we do have a plat, um, that was submitted, uh, not for that property, but for the part that is rezoned already. So, on the part that he's already rezoned, he's rezoned part of the parent tract, the R4, and they were planning 23 houses. There's two commercial lots, one of them's a pump station, and then, so 26 total lots. Now that's on an adjoining property, not this property, so it doesn't mean that they're gonna do the same thing on this property. I mean, could he come in and say, "We're gonna do duplexes," potentially, but the first, uh, area that he's developing there that's already been rezoned, they were doing 23 housing, single-family lots.
So, sorry, Jerry, let me say this first, this may be helpful. Part of the issue, too, the history with this property is a portion of the owner's property was already rezoned R4 earlier. Uh, then another portion, uh, was not recommended for approval on R4 after Fort Knox objected at the public hearing. Well, the first time, they didn't object. So it made things a little sticky for the planning commission, and that may be perhaps why they had the tie vote initially. But after further consideration, and according to law, they had the right to do it, the planning commission ended up making the recommendation that they made. So, so some of this property already nearby was already rezoned R4, so, you know.
I was going to say, sir, what impresses me about the, the rezoning is that it was already commercial. And I think they probably took into consideration the fact that this is close to a veteran's home and it's close to a veteran cemetery, and it's much better fit to have R4 zoning rather than commercial zoning, which make a lot of noise and be a lot of helterskelter, so.
Well, and, and the, there has, there is a need for housing, you know? We've been told by real estate professionals, we've been told by business professionals and leaders that we need more housing and we need more flexible-type housing, and so that, there is tension there, you know? Uh, the installation would prefer that we not have new development within a certain, um, distance from the installation's borders, which is understandable. The problem is, you know, when, when we push development out so far, now it's inconvenient for a lot of folks. So, you know, as Jerry mentioned, uh, older folks and veterans, a lot of times they like to live close to their services and amenities, restaurants and shopping and that kind of thing. So, zoning has tension sometimes, and this is one of those examples where you have tension and you have competing interests. One thing I think the planning commission took into consideration was the letter from the Garrison Commander's office said, "If you do go residential on this, we'd like to see these two things." And the owner applicant agreed to those two things, and that was part of the planning commission recommendation. That's what would be, if you guys approve it, it would go into the record as that would be binding on, on the owner applicant and any future development. So, that's, uh, that's something that I think was very important for the commission.
Murray, was that fence all the way down the whole backside or just on the?
Whole side that's adjacent to the installation boundary.
What was that, did it have a height on it?
Seven foot high with, uh, chain link with three, three strand barbed wire at the top.
I want to say that boundary was 700 feet, something like that, approximately?
Something like that.
It was less than 1,000 feet, I think.
Yeah. Did that include the existing R4 that was done or just the new zone?
Just the new one.
Just the new one?
Yeah.
So again, those are your options. Uh, what, what the custom of the council typically has been is to review what the planning commission did, look at their recommendation, look at evidence of record and documents, and, and make a decision based on that. You know, for efficiency and not just speed, but also for the integrity of the, of the planning commission process, you know, and me sitting there advising them as well, I didn't see any reason at all to think that that decision was improperly made or violated any legal precedent or regulations or anything like that. The law is that the city council is not supposed to go out and make independent factual investigations. That's the law. Now, if you're out driving around the city?
Well, as I say.
That's one thing, but to go out and.
When I go that way, I see they're already moving dirt on the existing R4 that's out there, I think they're already moving.
So, yeah, like I said, you're, the city council, and, and the planning commissioners are not supposed to go out and conduct independent factual investigation.
Yep.
You know, you don't go out on the site and, yeah, you don't walk it and all that stuff. I mean, driving by is fine, just to see where it is, but, um, but you're not supposed to engage in factual interviews, right? Go talk to the neighbors, that kind of thing. You're not really supposed to do that.
Murray, you got B is pretty much covered the same. Do you want to mention B real quick?
Okay, so the other request, uh, the other request is a rezone application for the property at 2787 Hill Street, Vine Grove, Kentucky, and it's currently RH, residential holding, and R2, residential 2, and they're requesting the whole thing be rezoned to residential 2, R2, and that was requested by Glenn Turner. And the property is currently 38.76 acres. The existing zone classifications are RH and R2. Uh, the property's split-zone, 27.99 acres, RH, 10.761, R2. Uh, property's currently being used as a farm. Surrounding properties consist of single-family detached residential and farmland. The Radcliffe Planning Commission has recommended approval of the zone map amendment from RH and R2 zones to a R2 zone. So it's split-zoned and they want to go to a single zone. So, it's split zoned, and they want to go to a single zone. The RH zone classification, residential holding, it's being held for future residential use, so it's kind of in a holding state where it's very limited, which you can develop in there. So, the goal is to eventually rezon it to a residential class. Given part of this property is already zoned R2, that makes sense. And pretty much most everything, if you look at the attached zoning map, is also currently R2 for the most part. Just to make it simple, everything yellow on the map is R2, so you can see a lot of that surrounding, the surrounding neighborhoods are already R2. A little bit of R3, the orange across the street, but it's actually a higher zoning class than the R2. That's a, the R2 is low-density, single-family, and the R3 is medium-density, single-family duplex.
I have a question.
Yeah?
What about the concerns of hunting near the housing areas? I know what it says here, but, you know, at least 100 years ago, rules doesn't mean a thing to some people. That's why we're not.
So, I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I don't know that, I believe there's actually, potentially, you could carry a citation for discharging a weapon in the city, I believe. So, I don't know that hunting is necessarily prohibited, but I don't know that it's permissible. I think people potentially do hunt in the city limits.
Well, this document says that they are not allowed to hunt 100 meters from the boundary. But, you know, who's out there measuring? Yeah, who's enforcing it?
There wasn't much said about that during the public hearing.
So, your question is pertaining to hunting on the installation versus in the city limits? Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there wasn't much said about that, not during the public hearing, other than what was in the letter from Colonel Reche.
I have one more statement, I guess. This may or not pertain to this, but I know in some areas, there's a buffer. In some places, I don't know exactly, so I'm not going to try to quote it, but it's five miles, it's 10 miles. I mean, some developments off around Fort Knox, is this, does this have a buffer attached to it also?
Not a binding buffer.
Okay. But we do have some areas in Radcliffe that have a buffer, don't they, like, isn't that?
It's not that, it's not that large.
I'm trying to think what you're talking about.
I was thinking, like, wasn't it Doc Mayer's property?
No, that's on, that was out in the county initially. They had to have 10 acres per one house, yeah.
Or 10 acres, okay.
Because they did one, yeah, volume.
It wasn't a buffer issue.
So, the previous study before Cup was called J-List Joint Land Use Study. And in that study, they had noise contour zones based off where the ranges were and where they were doing heavy artillery, that kind of thing. Depending on the type of, the type of weapons they're using. Of course, that's near the Yano Range, the 313 corridor area, and that's actually in the county. We do have some land along the south side of Kentucky 313, Joe Prather Highway. Most of our land fell.
What's that change at two and a half acres?
Uh, we did have a higher density than anywhere in the city. It's a RUE zone, it's like two and a half acre average lot size. Most of that, those noise contours fell in the county portion of land. Very little of, like, the most eastern edge of Auburn Hills is even in that area. Most of city land is not in that 313 corridor. And the 313 corridor was actually within the county's development guidance system. So, what they did through that area, they created development restrictions in this corridor, 10-acre lots. But they said you could do a second dwelling unit with a conditional use, so basically like a five-acre average. So, the area, you know, Auburn Hills, a small area that's got a, barely the eastern edge of that development that is in that noise contour area. The city came back and we developed the RUE zone, rural estates, that was like a two and a half acre average. So, we kind of wanted to meet somewhere in the middle, maybe not quite the county density, because county is traditionally a lot lower density than we are.
And then, south boundary and all that, that was all built, sent, all that over there.
It was all built, yeah.
That was all built out before that came in?
Mayor, just a quick note about how times have changed. Remember, we used to get all the noise from Fort Knox. Nowadays, there's more noise from firecrackers and fireworks around 4th of July than there is noise coming from Fort Knox anymore. Things have really changed.
I think they're hoping to make that a little bit more louder over there, I think.
I hope it changes, I hope it changes.
So, there really wasn't much opposition on the second zone map amendment request, the one with RH and the split zoning. And like Murray said, you know, with residential holding, that is, and we pointed this out during the meeting, residential holding is a temporary zone, right? It's holding for now. It's not supposed to be residential holding forever. And so, when someone says, I want to rezone it from residential holding to residential two, and when you see on the map, part of the property is already yellow, which is R2, the rest is blue, which is RH, and they want it to be yellow, it made sense to the planning commission, right? So, that's why they did what they did. Also, just one last thing, just as a general reminder, is remember who your planning commissioners are. You know, Charlene Easter is the chairman, and then we have our two new members. But the ones voting on these particular issues, Sherry Barnes, and Lee Bishop, and Percy Black. And so, you've got Fort Knox connections, military connections. You know, those, our commissioners are not people who have no clue who and where Fort Knox is, right? So, that's just a little bit of a recommendation for them, you know. They've been on there for a while, Mr. Black and Ms. Easter and Ms. Barnes. And Mr. Bishop is a little newer, but he's seen a few battles, so. And then we have our new, our two new commissioners. But again, just talking them up a bit, because sometimes that gets lost, you know. And what I tell the planning commission, and I've said this publicly, is, other than this body right here, right, the toughest board to be on is planning commission.
Absolutely.
Because you may go six months, and it's easy breezy, and then you may have a real contentious issue, and you're going to make half the room or more mad. Mr. Thompson's been on it, he knows. So, it's tough, but we need intelligent people. We need people who will do their homework, who will abide by the law, and who will listen and make good sound judgments in the midst of competing interests, right? And it's tough, it's hard to do, it's hard to do. And then, and they have to do it within certain narrow confines. They're not supposed to be terribly political, right? You guys can be political on certain things, on a lot of things. They can't be, not supposed to be. So, again, big fans of the planning commission.
And the one great thing is, I can never vote on it, just so you all know.
The law says the mayor is not allowed to break a tie vote on his own map amendment.
Never break a tie, I'm always the good guy up here.
If he can't vote, he just has to sit here and look at it.
I gotta look here and smile. Well, if there's no final questions with that, we can, you all can read through all that. You should have all the notes, all the hearings. Obviously, you know, there were some issues that's much different than what we see in a normal rezon.
Do they have transcript?
I think Chris is still working on that. I'll have to just check and see if he's got that complete yet.
So, there should be a transcript of the public hearing, and staff will make that available as soon as it's ready for you to look at it. And it's a, should be a word-for-word transcript of the public hearing, all that was said, which may be helpful.
And I, you know, want to mention, the deputy Garrison is here, Mr. Bradford. He's been, and I just, you know, for all this process and with this process, he's always been good to work with in other avenues. And so, we appreciate his always willingness to participate and speak up for the installation when this goes a certain way. But, you know, along with Mr. Pracer and Mr. Turner, obviously, you know, sometimes you have to make, things get tough, and you have to wade through those. And so, we appreciate the planning commission, like Mr. Pike said, and all the information and the input that the community and, as well as Fort Knox, has put in on this, so.
And one last note, I've talked a lot, but the planning commission hearing was orderly. Everyone got to say their piece. Everyone was model citizens, and it's the way government should work, right? They came and said what they needed to say, and everybody got to say their piece, and before the meeting was over. So, that's how we like to do it.
All right, thank you, Murray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I know, Mr. Prather, you may be leaving here, you know, you're more welcome to leave now that that was over. But do you still get excited when you hear people mention Joe Prather? I drove on Joe Prather Highway. Do you still?
I feel humbled. I've been honored with the perception, all the received, most community.
Yep.
I'm still over my own argument.
Absolutely, it was good seeing you and your wife tonight, so thank you all so much. But you all are more welcome, I know we kept you a little bit longer, but I know you all had somewhere to be, so if you need to leave. Yes, sir, thank you. All right, next, we'll move up, move back to number two. Fire chief, you want to come up? Timmy, come on up. You may have to grab a chair. Chance, we ain't going to let Chance cut his grass tonight, he may have to.
I figured Chief would handle it.
You might, Chance, grab another chair over there if you don't care, should be one. All right, this is something we had talked about. I had mentioned to you all during budget time, and now it's here. We have officially, as of August 2nd, I believe, was August 2nd, August 1st? August 2nd? August 1st? You officially started running some things up there at the firehouse, and you're still here. So, that's a good thing, isn't it? We have discussed during the hiring process, when we were looking at the chief, that we understood that Jamie, our past fire chief, took on a lot of responsibilities, some more than what we even kind of knew. And so, in that structure, this was a unique time for the fire department with the amount of service years that was leaving us. And so, we had, of course, Chief Henderson that left. Immediately with that, our captain left, who had 24 years. And then we had Ron Pete that left in code enforcement. We had all of our volunteers retire, some that had 40, what, Bob had 41 years, 40 years? And then we had several that had, so there was just, and then Worthington had, what, 20-some years?
27, 27.
27 years. So, we just have a lot of time that was walking out. And with that, Tim has 25 years himself. We moved one of our lieutenants into the captain's position, which was held by Steve Compton. But what we feel is missing is an additional captain's position. Because what has happened is, in that scenario, when we were doing the interviews and speaking with Elizabetown Fire Chief, the number of battalion chiefs that they have that help manage the department. Another scenario that happened is, we lost our secretary in this scenario. She was the, what do you call, admin assistant.
Administrative assistant.
For the fire department, she also left. And so, really, the continuity and the flow has now fell on Chief Marsh's shoulders, as well as Captain Green's. And so, what we're looking at in this scenario that we would like to propose is very similar to exactly what the fire, excuse me, the police department has, is where you have the fire chief, you'll have an administrative captain, and then you'll have a operational captain. That position would be filled with someone that's got over, almost 20 or 21 years of service, who's well-versed in what we do. He was also one of the interviewees for chief. But in this scenario, now we have three people that are working towards the goal that I think we need in the department. Where we're able to do this is, with the administrative assistant position, we're not going to fill that. We're going to use that money to help fund the position for the new captain. But also keeping in mind that with this, when everybody gets promoted, you know what happens? You have his position, which was lieutenant, moved up to chief. You have a lieutenant move to captain, you have another lieutenant move to captain. Now, you need three new lieutenants, which means those come from the sergeants. Now, you have three new sergeants. And this progression would have happened for both of those, I guess, for two at least up the chain. This is going to add an extra one, and this will give us an additional firefighter at the end of all this. And so, I know I'm speaking a lot, but we've been running these numbers for a while. So, Chance ran the numbers, and you're looking at about 81,000, 82,000 to make this whole thing work in this scenario. Is that right, Chance?
Mm-hmm.
So, chief came in this morning, him and Chance and myself met, and I think, chief, that you feel like this is a, this is a good way to go, plus morale, get guys being able to move up in new positions, and really help the department. Yep, and that would be a daytime captain, operational, yep. So, 81, what's the exact number?
Well, give or take, 81, 870.
Yep.
Like the mayor said, six, when it's all said and done, there's going to be about nine promotions, which obviously is a lot, but six of those would have happened anyway. Some of the other promotions are obviously resulted, he added a second captain slot, and then the lieutenant moves up, like the mayor said, there's three more promotions that would, you know, and those promotions are just paid according to the policy that we just approved, you know, with the council, effective July 1st, on the new police and fire pipeline.
Yeah, we waited, actually, during the scenario, and I think Councilwoman Merle can attest to this. During that meeting, we just started discussing it outside the realm of, you know, we may really need to consider adding an additional captain, just understanding and knowing the amount of workload that Jamie did take on. And I want to give him, you know, obviously, he's probably saying, I told you all I needed, I needed more help.
Now you do.
He's watching it at home right now. But, you know, ultimately, he suggested this as well. He thought, you know, this would be a good scenario to help the future, because we never anticipated that we would lose not only our chief, but then the captain would assume that role. That captain left, and then we really, it kind of left us in a parallel of bringing in lieutenants, which is fine. But you didn't have that, because I thought, some of you all thought Compton at one point was going to take the position, yeah. But I think for future growth and opportunity, I just think it set this up, just like the police department. Jeff, I think it worked very well for your operational sides. And I think it's just a good scenario that we set that up like that in the fire department. And actually, I thought it was going to be a heck of a lot more when Chance told me 81. I said, oh, well, that's, I was expecting a lot bigger number with all the promotions added into that, plus the extra personnel at the back end. But I think it gives us two at the end, one that we gave, the extra one, because everybody moved up. And then, as well as opportunity for guys that haven't been able to promote over the years, opportunities now to get new nine promotions, I think is important, so. Any questions?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, just kind of a background over chief and what's going on right now.
So.
May we do that?
As far as?
How many firefighters, how many vehicles, things like that? What bodes for the future, what are you looking for?
Jerry, he just started, so basically, 11 days.
He's been on the force for quite a while.
Do it next week, chief, do it next week.
He knows, he knows, you know, just for the edification of the.
Well, I'll let you answer as much as you possibly answer.
I'm sorry, I went in and get my feet wet and went in over my head.
You've been under force for quite a while. Do you have a, are you one of those people who thought, boy, if I'm ever in charge, this is something I would really like to do? Have you any thoughts as to, to affect any changes or to see, to start doing something a little bit differently?
Well, with the captain's position and things changing that way, that's going to be a change, you know, obviously. There are some things that I would like to see changed, you know, procedurally and stuff that we're going to have to work on and develop as we go. Right now, with all the stuff that Chief Henderson did, you know, trying to learn all that, you know, I've had, I've been at it for a week, and I had six days of training prior to that, so.
Yeah, what was tough, that's what I was saying, usually, your captain is the closest, in our scenarios, is going to be the next kind of closest person to that. The lieutenants don't necessarily get to see that side of it. So, when he came into it, it's like he's taking the leap. His years of service is what's helping us keep the continuity within the operational side of the department. He's now having to learn a lot of the administrative side, which he now, you know, I know you see it now, but Jamie did a lot of that, and with the, you know, the assistance of Chance and some of the personnel here, Ashley as well, it's helping work through that. That's why it's important, I think, that when we add this operational captain, that frees up a little bit on the operational side to give him a little bit more leeway to operate and do more that we're supposed to be doing with the fire department.
Sure.
Yep.
Are you happy with two stations right now?
I am, I'd be glad to get back in there in a second.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still working on the second one.
I know.
We're getting close, it's almost there.
We're supposed to finish tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah. Tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
I know, he showed up this morning with a lieutenant shirt on and.
I got him down.
I noticed that when you sat down, so. All right, well, so we'll work on that, we'll propose a, just be an ordinance change at the first reading of the ordinance change, Mr. Pike, I guess on that.
Yes.
So we're zeroing out the administrative assistant, and then we'll add two to the captains. All right, thank you.
Is that good, Jake, just to carry on?
Building department.
He just forgot to take off.
All right, we're good, yep, we're good, thank you. Jeffrey, or Chief, Chief, you want to come up?
I'd be here for Cross.
You probably ought to be here for Cross too.
I would sure.
Hello everybody.
Well, hey, before you sit down, hey Tim, was that easy as you thought it was going to be, your first go, or? They ain't always this easy, it ain't always, they're not always this polite, so.
Ask Chief Cross.
Stick around. I show you how to get them stirred up.
All right, finally, this is a handbook issue that we wanted to address. Chief had discussed this a little bit at budget time, and I'll be honest with you, it's just something that came up recently due to us, where's my sheet at? I may have, you may have to read my, you got the, yeah, you may have to read that. I thought I had it up here, I don't, you got it, yeah, there it is.
Yes, right here.
Yeah.
In the second one.
So, we recently lost another retired officer to a different community, and this is not something that you all have done, but it's something that we had considered. And Jeff, if you'll read that line item, or the line where it reads, a certified police officer, an agency of 10 years.
Yes, currently, what our policy says in reference to a lateral transfer coming to us with someone that has 10 complete years, it says a certified police officer with 11 and more years of service with a current salary of 57,200 and be given 10 complete full years of RPD service credit by receiving annual 3% staff pay adjustment. Now, what, the important part of that is, is we're basically, we're giving credit for someone that may have 10, 11, 12, 14, or 15 years, whatever that number might be, you're giving them that credit and starting them in at that salary, which would be in their 11th year of service.
The or, the 10 years of service hired will earn a salary, and then whereas the five years give RPD service term by annual, where's the or at? A certified police officer of 11 years?
I don't have that on mine.
That's where we, no, we discussed on the retirees.
Yes.
Yeah, we're just reading, that's.
That's what it currently says, and it only addresses laterals now. What we had hoped when, what I had hoped and envisioned that, when we went from the old scale to the new scale, we included the retirees also in that, because they all have 10 or more years of experience. They have 20, 25, or whatever it is, so we give them that same credit for their experience that they bring to us, for, you know, helping us in bringing the experience that they do. But, you know, if you look at it as, and currently, we save money by hiring the retired person over hiring a new person and paying all the benefits that we don't have to pay to the retired person, but you also have to look at it in comparison to other agencies when you're trying to get these folks that bring the experience. I'm paying, or we're paying, we're actually paying for that experience that they have, that 20, 25 years or whatever it is, 15 years, you know, plus.
Ours is 10 or 11 years that we're going to give credit for.
And we cut it off at 10 years, so the same is for a lateral, that's what we're recommending. Keep that the same as a lateral, because you're giving a lateral 10 years of experience total, let's go ahead and give it to the retirees, because they have more than, way more than that lateral does.
Do they have at least 20 retirement, yeah. And then Chance, what would that look like when we do that, that if you go to the scale, it'll show?
Well, a couple of things, because of course, you know, this entire pay plan for police and fire, you know, there's a approved draft on the council, but a couple of sentences above where Chief Cross read, which is about three-fourths of the way down, we read this statement, "A state retiree who is hired will earn a salary of $67,671 upon his annual contract signing, and then there will be no salary adjustment during their employment unless done so by action of the council." So that's how it's currently done, because when we first introduced the concept of, not we, when the chief introduced the concept of contract officers, because Kentucky retirement allows you to hire them without paying their health insurance and without paying the employer match on the retirement, those are cost savings to the city. When we did that several years ago, we just wrote it as a separate sentence in this document. So as it stands now, anytime we hire a state retiree to work as a police officer, you know, the council basically has to approve whatever that salary is because of that statement that I just read. So it's a fixed amount, subject only to council vote to change, and what the chief is recommending, as he has just stated, is that given their years of service of 20-plus in relation to our current policy of laterals who have 10 complete years, is to make them equal, so that statement would be removed, so it's not, council wouldn't be directly approving whatever their new salary is as stated, it would be the equivalent of the statement that he read, which would be an 11th year police officer.
Which is the pay plan.
What they get paid.
That's the pay plan though, right?
And that's, and that's already in the pay plan, that's approved document.
Because right now, they're at 67, so if you go to 67, that is?
That takes it to 76. 76, 870.
Yeah, that's where it struck, that's where the new pay plan is.
Now, the importance of that is, I think, is what Chance spoke of, is you strike the dollar figure out, and if in future, let's say we redid our scale again three years from now, and it, you know, and that creates the growth to go up more, it, like it did with the laterals, it automatically goes with the retirees too, that same scenario. So you don't have to come back every time and approve a dollar amount, it just approves with the scale, the same as it does for the lateral officers.
And Chief, how many we got right now?
The importance of, we have six right now retirees on the books, we're allowed 11 of those folks. Now, just to give you a little bit of history why this is becoming really important to us, since the 1st of July, you all gave us one extra officer, or an additional officer in the budget this year, which took our strength package from '40 to '42. At the time we did that and entered into this budget, we had 41 officers on the books. Now, that was with officers that were getting ready to start, and officers that would be in the academy, and officers that were in PTO training. So since that time, we have lost three officers to other agencies. We have one officer that just retired last week. We had one that resigned for personal reasons last week, got out of the office. We have one retired officer that's going to be retired in October and not renewing with us. So, that's six officers down, plus four of those officers are either in the academy currently or getting ready to start the academy. So we have 10 officers that don't have boots on the ground. So, and in the months of, the important timing of this, I feel, during the months of July, August, September, and October, there's a lot of retirements going on around the state, and in our area too, that involves law enforcement. So I think it's an opportune time maybe to jump on this and try to get some immediate help to us, and this is further why this is important. We have, currently have one officer that has more than 10 years at RPD. Now, this is outside of retirees and outside of supervisors, I'm talking about the worker bees, so to speak, if you want to call it that, that's on the front lines. We have between five and nine years, we have four of those, and three out of those four are at five and six-year levels. We have nine officers that have less than five years. We have five officers that are in their first year, and like I said, four of those are in the academy, and one of the other ones has less than a year. So if you see where I'm going with this, we have a lot of officers that don't have a lot of experience. That doesn't mean they're 21 years old or 22 years old, but they don't have a lot of experience in law enforcement. So, I feel like that if we try to take advantage of this and see if this will work for us, there's no guarantees that if we put it at 100,000, that they'll rush to us, but we got to try something, and that's why I'm asking for your help to further this, to try and fast-track it if we can. Now, I would like to say this, and, you know, the younger you are in this business, the increases liability that you have from an administration standpoint, if you've got a lot of young people that are making these split-second decisions out here, and that's the importance of the supervisors and the retired people that we could get to maybe come in and help blend with those folks, and watch over those, and help with those decisions that have to be made.
And this doesn't affect any, this doesn't affect anything but the retirees, there's no, yeah, this is not anything on as far as scale.
And this would affect, there's one retiree that just started today, so I would ask if we could to make, hit that person's pay retro, because if you all approve this next Tuesday, he wouldn't have his first check yet. So if we could, if you approve this, we could include that officer in the new pay scale. Everyone else would not get an immediate bump in as a retiree, when they're, they would work at their current pay until their contract expired, their current contract. And then once their current contract expired, if they re-up or anyone else we hire after this point forward, they would also get the new pay. So, and we have, the earliest that we have any renewals would be January and February, and then we have one in June that started here just prior to the budget. So, that's kind of the rundown of why I feel like this is important, and that would hopefully give us immediate relief, because when you hire a brand-new person, and I'll take either one that we give, but when you hire a brand-new person, they're a year before you can really count on them to be manpower to you. And a retired person, especially if they've been here before and they come back, they know the layout of the land and the rules and everything that goes along with it, they're immediate help to us. Even those that haven't worked here before, you know, you can come in and maybe they spend six, eight weeks learning our system, and they're more immediate help to us in that manner. So, this is something I bring to you all, we need this help, I appreciate if y'all give us some serious consideration and see if we can move to two things, bring this consistency in with laterals and retirees that have that much experience. Some of these places, they're giving up to 20 years, they're basically buying all that experience with high pay, and I'm not, certainly not asking that, I'm just trying to get us, you know, in the ballpark with them, and maybe somebody that might want to go to one of those high-dollar places, but they have to drive to get there and put more hours in back and forth to that position, maybe we can keep them home, so to speak, at least being close to their homes.
Any questions for the chief?
You mentioned that three officers had left for other agencies, were they older, younger?
They were, two of them were five and six, one had, one had six, five years experience plus, one had 10, 12, eight years, but that person had been here before, worked some, left, come back, they've left again, and it's always, it's not always about money, it's not always about money, some things are, it's about other things too, you know, there's what's going on home with them, might be a better fit for them. But we did have one lateral, one of those officers was a retired guy that we lost.
Okay.
Just recently, in the last couple of weeks, and he got a little, he got a little bit of a pay raise to make that move. Now, if we make the move we make, ultimately, he's lost.
Yeah, he should have stayed.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks for the information, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you all for your consideration, I certainly appreciate it.
All right, I think that's it. Do you have a question?
No, I was just going to say, sitting behind you as a retired lieutenant from Louisville Metro, and I'm watching her nod her head to all the things she's saying, I'm not saying you were able to recruit her, but, but she is retired, and I'm just saying.
Was it LMPD?
Yeah, so she's patiently waiting.
I know, I've seen you before, it's where I was like, no, you're sitting there the whole time, I lean over to Ash, I said, "I know her from somewhere."
Chief been here before.
We got one working for us that retired from Jefferson County, and he's the LMPD before it went over.
LMPD lieutenant.
Yeah, he's a LMPD lieutenant before he left.
And one from, a major from Jefferson County, the old Jefferson County.
Good people, we love to have you. Chance, I guess you go cut your grass, we need you for this. All right, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate you hanging out.
Chief, you want to hang out, I mean, you may just want to sit right there, but that way she has any questions, so she may want to.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
You don't mind.
Did you get to eat the food I brought last week?
I did not, what day did you bring it?
I brought chicken and potatoes, lemon pepper chicken and potatoes, I brought 12.
What day was it?
I don't remember, but there was Lieutenant Kirk, Kirk?
Kirkpatrick.
Kirkpatrick, and he came and stopped, and then he tried to leave it, he said, "Hell, I'm going behind, I'm going to go eat."
See, that's the problem, if you bring that up here and turn it in, we kind of filter it down, but if you take it, the patrol gets it first, I probably don't get any.
Well, I'm going to have especially, okay, but what I want to ask is how many were there, because I brought 12 meals.
Yeah, I'm sure that they.
Doubled?
Somebody got through.
I'm sure they did.
So should I bring 12 meals again, or 16, how many are there?
Well, generally, if you bring it, there will always be a half a dozen there to eat it, now, at certain times, like if you come after nine at night, you're probably going to run into, you know, eight or 10 maybe that's going to be eaten. In the daytime, you know, you've got all the detectives there, all the administration, there are going to be 10 or 12 there to eat.
Okay.
So, I think probably what you bought, brought is a pretty, a pretty good number at any time during the day, but some of them guys will get their second.
Anytime, lunch, lunch too, anytime, afternoon, because that was afternoon.
Especially doughnuts, if you bring doughnuts.
Oh, no, I don't.
It's like a bunch of sharks.
That's a no-brainer.
I bring baklava, no doughnuts.
Jeff, you want to hang out for a minute, you can slide over?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Merle, I'll let you bring up your guests and the ordinance you said you were going to discuss.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, do you mind?
Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for being patient, yes.
Been a long meeting today.
And this is very unusual for us to have a meeting this long, so I do appreciate it, and for most of the council, I don't know if Jerry was here, and I know Maria was not, but Ms. Joy Keely's been with us before, she's the founder of the Kentucky Link Coalition, and as I said, she's a retired lieutenant from Louisville Metro Police Department, and she's here to help answer any questions, explain a little bit more about this ordinance that I'm proposing and trying to produce.
Do you just want to, before she, do you just want to refresh the ordinance?
Yes, yes, so the ordinance, yes, and she helped with that at Louisville Metro, so the ordinance is for first responders to. So the ordinance is for first responders to be able to. Yeah, break or enter into an unattended motor vehicle if there's an animal that's been left in this vehicle unattended. They have the ability to seize the animal, break the window, whatever it has to be, but there are stipulations, which is all outlined in this. And Mr. Pike, I appreciate it, he's outlined this very well, and we did add the definition of first responder. I don't think you have the new one.
I bet.
But she can explain it a little bit better. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I think there was some questions raised, maybe by even Chief Cross and some folks, as to why we would need this ordinance. And so Ms. Joy Keely is here to help answer any questions and explain that. So, Joy?
I actually have 45 years in law enforcement and I'm also a Kentucky certified police instructor and have been for decades. I'm a training trainer in homeland security and also investigations. So, and the reason why I wrote this ordinance for Louisville Metro is because, number one, animal control gets no, there's no mandated training for animal control in the state of Kentucky, okay? And which I, I got real issues with, okay? When they're surfing felony search warrants and making felony citation arrests, I got real issues with that. So, but there's also no, no education or training for police officers or law enforcement in the state of Kentucky on animal laws, animal cruelty, animal case law. You know, you've got statutory law, which is your KRS, you've got case law, which kind of defines what statutory law is. And there's no mandated training on that in the state of Kentucky. So one of the reasons why we, I wrote this is it's reflective of other Good Samaritan laws in the state of Kentucky. But, you know, you've got temperatures inside of cars that can rise to 20, 40 degrees and animals can die in 15 minutes. And, I mean, look at the way this summer's been, okay? I mean, it's been awful. And in Jefferson County, we're getting four to five calls a week on animal control, animals left in hot cars. And there's been officers that have waited for up to an hour, not knowing what to do as far as what they can and can't do. So what, what I did was I took KRS 411.24245, which allows any person to enter a vehicle to save a child, okay? Now, I've restricted that and LMPD, I mean, Jefferson County's ordinance, Louisville Metro's ordinance, to just strictly first responders instead of anybody, okay? And that way, and it also outlines what to look for. You've got police, fire, EMS, fire, EMS, first responders, they're real familiar with what medical distress looks like, okay? I mean, that's what they're there for, all right? And so that's why I included them. Animal control should be included in on the first responders as well as police. Now, police have extra, we have extra things involved with search of seizure as far as being able to enter what's considered private property such as a vehicle. However, you have case law, which is, and I'll give you the exact one, United Pet Supply Inc. versus City of Chattanooga, which was a Sixth Circuit decision, federal appellate court decision, which states that exigent circumstances based on the Constitution. The Constitution says that police can enter a private property if there's exigent circumstances such as in an immediate pursuit of somebody, okay? That's one. Number two is if there, if evidence is about to be destroyed or moved before they can get a warrant. That's three, that's two. Number three is if they believe someone inside a location needs immediate assistance due to injury or danger and the officer believes there's an immediate threat to the safety of themselves or others. That's what the US, the exigent circumstances under the Fourth Amendment, US Constitution, all right? Now, what the Sixth Circuit did was they said others means animals as well. It means people and animals. So if you have exigent circumstances, then animal or animals are being, are, you know, there's an immediate threat to the safety of these animals, whether they're inside a vehicle, inside a house, inside a barn, police can enter. So we have, we have more restrictions on us, obviously, than fire and EMS do because they've got a lot of Good Samaritan laws involved in rescuing them. So this is why I wrote this law for Louisville Metro and why I'd like to see it passed here is so we can, you know, I was, I founded the Kentucky Link Coalition, because that was a child abuse attack. And I saw the link between animal abuse and crimes against people, particularly children, particularly domestic violence, particularly elder abuse, and there may be a child in that car as well, all right?
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't want any law enforcement officer or EMS or fire or animal control to say, ah, we need permission from the owner, we got to wait, you know, and granted, you do have to try, and according to this ordinance, which I agree with, you do have to try to get the, make effort to get the owner there. I absolutely agree with that. But at the same time, you can't wait an hour in this kind of heat, okay? So I really encourage this ordinance to be passed. It's done well in Jefferson County. I think it will do well here. I think being particularly restricted to first responders, you're not going to get random people breaking out windows of cars when they don't know what they're looking for because it is, you know, something that can be trained and something that law enforcement officers and EMS and fire can, can look at prior to making that decision, okay?
And this protects the first responders, why? Why, what is the difference between?
It protects them from liability as far as being, breaking out of a vehicle.
Right.
You know, because you're rescuing somebody, it's a Good Samaritan law.
Every modern car with the remote control and the mechanism, if you push it on the back or the tire, it will start beeping. Every car. It has to be a 70, 1970 model not to be able to do that. So that's also a solution. If you kick the tire, it starts, yes. When you have the remote control.
Yeah.
And you press the panic button. Some cars, I don't know how many and what models, if you, I read somewhere that kids were doing that, that you kick the tire and they start making noise. Somebody drives by and touches it and makes noise, makes the panic button. So, I don't know if it's all the cars or just.
And I hope that this keeps, to your point, from citizens, because I'll tell you, I'll hold up my phone and I know everyone can't see this, but there's a dog in this car, in this window. This was August 4th, and I'm getting a call, can anyone help me? This dog is in the car at Walmart, panting and pacing in the car. I get these, I could probably pull up several of these. Now, I don't know how many times people call the police, call me, try to go into Walmart, try to find the owner, but I get several of these and I ended up calling E-Town. By the time I got all these pictures, the lady comes out, the dogs, the window's rolled up, there's a crack in the window, all these things. It's, it's, this lady was panicking because it was almost an hour, 45 minutes that she was there. I'm not going to bust on any police, but the police, she, the lady came out with the groceries and already got in the car and left before anything was done. Now, we did get license plates, she did, and we did send it forward to the police, to the police department. Now, whether or not they follow up on it, I don't know because everybody, the police, I get it, there's a lot of crime, a lot of things that are happening. But I just want to make sure for this body, why, I've known Joy for many years now, so you all have met her before, she was here before, because she helps write these things so that it's, you all have the ability to ask the questions, not to me, but to somebody that helped write it, that helped pass that in Jefferson County. And that was how many years ago? That was passed?
I think it was three years ago.
And if I, and if I remember, they have like 200 and something calls a year?
Yeah. Well, three to five, or four to five calls every single week during the summer. I don't know exactly how much that adds up to.
So it's really.
The other thing is, as you're mentioning, police, and as the chief has mentioned, police personnel are down.
Right.
And that's why you need to expand it to include first responders here. You know, because police may be tied up, there could be a bank robbery down the street.
Which is why they couldn't get there because they can't always release somebody.
Yeah. And whereas you've got police and fire that are also trying, and animal control, but animal control may not be available at night, for example. You know, at six o'clock, when it's still 95 degrees out. I can also tell you, based on my study of animal cruelty in the state of Kentucky, most of these calls come in from citizens at like Walmarts. Walmart was the leading store that these came in from, but it's at places like that. And, and I can also tell you that if there's one thing that really ticks citizens of the community off is when innocents die. And the whole thing about what I do, the whole point of what I do is to leave no victims behind. And I don't care what, what species the victim is. I don't want any victims left behind. That's it.
And I will say too, to the council that, and my, Mr. Pike helped work this out, but I did speak with Don Jones, the county attorney, assistant county attorney, and Mike McNutt, animal control, to make sure that they, and this was forwarded to them, so make sure that they were okay with being included in this. And as if you've read the ordinance, it also says that they could house them and everybody was okay with it. Mike McNutt was okay with it, Don Jones was okay with it. So everyone was okay with this, with being involved and included and assisting with this ordinance. And that's.
So just, just for clarity, like, so I know there's fines, I think ours has written, written citation fines. What do you see from the owner's side if the windows are broke? What's, what's that side look like where the dog is removed, the complaint? Like, how do you, what have you seen from that side? Where they, they try to file a complaint with the city as far as a window being broke out? Like, are you going to replace my window?
What they'll usually, usually do is complain about when the case gets to court.
Okay.
Because animal control and certainly law enforcement can make a physical arrest or a citation arrest, and animal control can make a citation arrest, EMS and fire departments should stand by to wait for animal control or police to get there, but they can still enter. But usually it's brought up in court.
Okay.
And, you know, it's, this ordinance protects your first responders from these, you know, these, these people screaming because, I mean, you get screamed, as the chief will be able to tell, you get screamed at just for throwing somebody over. I mean, you know, just, you don't have the right to pull me over, you don't have the right to do this, you don't have the right to do that. You know, I mean, it's nonstop. So this is another, you know, another issue they would certainly raise.
Now, did you limit Louisville's to just dogs only or any animals? Like, say somebody has a cat in there, so it's any, okay? Which makes it.
And that is reflective also in the Sixth Circuit. The Sixth Circuit case law did not specify what animals are included in the definition of others.
Okay.
Okay? It just said animals are included in the definition.
As you know, there's people that have different tastes in what they consider animals. So I'm just wondering if it, if it pertained, you know, across the board. And then the last question I was going to ask you, is there a certain temperature, obviously, no heat, but is there a certain temperature that usually gauges? I know dogs panting, the head, the tongue, you know, the tongue, but like with other animals, is there a certain temperature that the car interior could reach that may, you know, let's, yeah, something that's, you know, let's say it's 100, if it's 95 outside, the inside of that car is probably 125, 130 degrees. Is that kind of automatic, you need to get the dog out or is a dog, you know, just been sitting in there for 10 minutes? Like, what's that gauge?
It, the temperature can literally go up 20 to 40 degrees in 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay? And depending, like 75, 70, if it's 75 degrees outside, it could go up to 95 in 20 minutes.
Okay.
Okay? And so, but you really have to gauge it on the temperature outside, the time, because somebody's going to be out there saying, I've been sitting here for 15 minutes and I saw her go in, you know, and she didn't, and I got it, I got it. So you're going to get some kind of estimate on how long that animal's been in the car, all right? Plus, you have to look at the outside temperature, plus you have to see what, as the ordinance says, how, how the animals is, how the animal is presenting, you know? Is it panting? Is it frantic? Is it, there drool coming out, et cetera? Now, if it's a snake, for example, it could be just laying there perfectly happy, you know? But we're probably not going to see a whole lot of that.
I want to say something.
Let me ask you one last, I got one last question before you do that.
Yes, sir.
And then the last thing, obviously, what if the dog, I don't use dog in this scenario, is aggressive towards the first responders? What do you typically see in that scenario? You know, all dogs are friendly, but you know.
I agree. And what I would do, if it was me, what I would do is I would break the window to make sure there's air getting in there, and I would stand there so with my back to the, to the animal, so I'm not confronting the animal, and I would call animal control. I would also, you know, I mean, this is me, I would, I always carry a slip lead in my car because we get dogs loose on school property and things like that where you've got to catch them to get them off, because the kids can't even go out to play, you know? So I always carry a slip lead in my car just for these kind of scenarios. I would encourage that all Radcliffe first responders do the same thing. And then I would offer, see if you've got some Good Samaritan out there who would offer water for the animal. And, you know, get the animal over to one side of the car, maybe barking like crazy at that person and slip the water in the broken window side. So there's, there's avenues of.
I just, you know, and that's what I'm thinking of, you know, sometimes the biggest dogs have won't jump, but that little guy's the one hitting the windshield just trying to get at you.
That Chihuahua may be a problem.
You know, that's, I was just kind of wondering, you know, so. Maria, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Speaking about how fast the temperature rises with the windows rolled up, I left the Radcliffe Farmers Market the other day with one plant in the trunk, and my phone rings, I go inside, I talk on the phone, I had to stay on the phone, I didn't get back the plant, one plant. I go outside, it was not droopy, it was dead. Plant! So much moisture on the leaves, absorbed all the moisture, it wasn't even 15 minutes. I was not, I talk a lot, but I was not on the phone 15 minutes, maybe 10.
So let's add a live animal to that scenario, Maria.
Wow.
I mean, basically, the ordinance is to protect our first responders, to make sure they're prepared, educate the public, make sure the public is not breaking out windows, that, find the owner first, do everything you can to find the owner, but it's when you can't find the owner is when you can, is when you should respond accordingly.
And you see the animal in distress.
Yes.
You know, and that's, that's the big thing.
And we have both of our chiefs in here, so chief of fire and chief of police.
And it's also reflective of case law, federal case law.
Chief, you got a question?
It is limited to only first responders, not citizens.
Not citizens.
Right.
If citizens, if they took it upon themselves to do that, then they took it upon themselves.
Now, you're sworn, Kim, if you want to bust a window out, we'll.
Under, under state law, naturally, anybody can break out a window for a child.
Yeah. For a child, yeah.
Right. So this is just more restrictive because we are dealing with animals.
Chief, do you have a question?
I was just, as you all were talking about temperature, the courts, when they generally rule, Mike could speak to this, it's usually what a reasonable person would assume, you know, would think that that would be, if it's hot enough or the distress of the animal, what any reasonable person would consider.
It's called a reasonable, reasonable belief, reasonable belief.
Yes, instead of, now it's focusing on the temperature that it triggered, it's, you know, it's usually that reasonable assumption by anybody that thinks that any human being would think would be bad.
Does anybody have any, Mike, or Mr. Pike has a ordinance that's drafted for that? Anybody has any comments or anything else for we move forward or put this on the agenda for next week? I think that's what you're asking, is it, Ms. Merle?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Joy.
It's good seeing you again.
Thank you for your patience, thank you.
Absolutely. Sorry, you came to the long, usually, usually we're pretty reasonable, but sometimes it takes a little while.
That's all right.
Probably not your first meeting you've ever said.
You don't have time for any pork.
It's your first time. It's your first time, so.
Well, thank you so much.
All right. Mayor Council comments, I guess I can start. Kim, I'll start on your side.
No, it is hot out there, so check on your neighbors, check on your family, especially older people, and take care of your animals.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Ms. Owens?
In that same lane for animals, when I'm at the shelter, which is every weekend and plus a day, we have what we call court dogs. And the court dogs can resolve for something like that. And we have one there, it's there now, that's been over two years. And so, they're caught in litigation between what happens to the owner or the outcome of the owner and what happens to the dog. And so, they're not in the kennels where we take our other ones out for socialization and, you know, exercise, or the puppies and the kittens, which we just started getting back. And that animal shelter is now a kill shelter. We lost our non-kill status. And so, it is very crucial that when these kind of things happen, you think in the long game, now, what's gonna happen? Do they go back to the owner? Was that just a slip of the mind because the person wanted to run into the store real quickly in ten minutes, end up being twenty minutes? And now, you've got an animal stuck in limbo. So, to see an animal without an outcome, because the ones we have don't know where they're going. They're just sort of hanging out, you know, in the back, getting walked clean and played with, but they can't join the general population, if you will. So, I tell people, just recently, I went to go look for two dogs that was claimed to be emaciated and lost on Lockston, and I did a home check. And it was a Concorcio, six months old, and the shepherd was fifteen years old, recovering from cancer. It was not those two dogs, but I actually went to the house because I get the same calls that she gets, except she's got the facility, I run after all the other stuff because that's what we all do up here when we are responding to our citizens. And so, you gotta look at your animals, you know, safely. Actually, sir, we just had that at the museum a couple of months ago. We had some veteran that left his dog in the car, left the window kind of slit, left it with some dog treats and a water bowl, and he says, "Hey, I'm going into the pet museum and, you know, see what's going on." And time got away. And some soldiers were coming in, and the dog was patting at the window, tongue basically hanging out the slit, just trying to get some relief. And he came right into the museum and had to call the MPs. And we do what we do, and the poor veteran was not happy. He's like, "I know my dog," but the dog had, it was hot. It was truly hot, so I think you're in there. Other than that, sir, the moonwalks are going great.
I heard you out there on the last one.
It was hot, even at eight fifteen. But for the team that puts that together, Vince Carmen, who sits on our Board of Conservation and Forestry along with Mr. James, and then our naturalist, which is Ms. Barbara Baker, you know, they get it together from soup to nuts, and we always learn something. And we typically stay there almost two hours, and our policemen have to come and usher us out so they can close the park down. But it goes really well, so anyone who wants to go to one, look on our website, and you'll find all of the upcoming ones. I think we've done nine right now, and we'll have the other ones to take us through the end of the year. So, protect yourself, protect your pets. Self-care doesn't just stop with you, you know, it stops with your furs and your fins and your feathered friends, and thank everybody else for what they do throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. Merle?
Yes. I do want to clarify, Ms. Owens had just mentioned that Hardin County Animal Shelter is now no-kill, they lost their status. Let me clarify by saying what that status is and where it comes from because I would probably beg to differ that we are not no-kill. I mean, that status comes from an organization called Best Friends Animal Society. They give shelters that award if they release a certain percentage. If you fall below that certain percentage, then they could take away that status. What that means is, we may not get an award, which, that's all that is. They're not, we're not going to, the Hardin County Animal Shelter is not going to be, so everybody on the Radcliffe shout and all these other, all these other medias do not need to be saying things like Hardin County is a kill shelter, is a kill shelter, is a kill shelter. Because if you do that, we are creating and already adding to an already overwhelming crisis. And the reason we probably lost that status, and I know Mr. McNutt was trying hard not to lose that, is because we're not releasing them as fast as we would like. And that is because we're not having as many adoptions, and we're taking in more than we can handle, which is why, you know, we're getting a lot, and everybody else, they're trying to get them out to other areas. So, Ms. Owens may not have that background as to what that really means, but they will not put down dogs just because we put down dogs. So, we are, we have not, we are not a kill shelter. I just wanted to give you some background on that because that will get out like wildfire, and that will not be good.
Yeah, we're holding more than we can.
We're holding more, so please adopt. The point being, go adopt, okay, so that we can get some more out. And Chief Marsh, because I wasn't here, I don't think, I was out of town, but congratulations for your position. And I also, you already mentioned it, mayor, but because I wasn't here and I was seeing a lot, I want to congratulate also on their retirement, Assistant Chief Bob Mahanna, we've mentioned it, forty years, Chief Jamie Henderson, thirty-four years. I missed his going away celebration. Mike Worthington, twenty-seven years, and Captain Steve Compton, as we said, twenty-five years. And we have a firefighter, Betty Townsend, twenty-five years, and Ron Peak, our code enforcement. So, all of them have just recently retired, and I just want to publicly say, and I'm sure if you all haven't already, that we appreciate all of their service for helping with serving Radcliffe. That's a lot of combined years of leadership, of experience. So, I just want to wish them all a happy retirement. And for your calendars, if you all would please, save September twentieth, it's a Saturday, the Radcliffe Day Parade will be happening as long, as well as our festival, our combined kind of cultural Radcliffe Day Festival with the vendors, the food trucks, some entertainment. Everything is not totally outlined yet, but that is in the works. The parade is handled strictly through the city with Ms. Ashley and her team, and she'll be getting that information out. But the date is set for Saturday, September twentieth, four to nine, with the parade and the festival. And that is it. Thank you.
Ms. Merle?
Well, that's a lot to follow, but I just want to piggyback onto something that Councilwoman Merle just mentioned, and that is congratulations to all of our retirees. And you're right, that is a significant loss of, or.
Combined years.
Combined years. Yes. That's a lot of history and experience. So, congratulations to all.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'm not sure about the dates, but we've got State Fair coming up, and Kelly Behren was asking for any citizens who want to volunteer to stay at the fair and plug Hardin County and plug Radcliffe. She could certainly use some good folks. Secondarily, secondarily, it was great seeing Senator Joe Prather today. I was his vice president for programs way back in the day for AUSA, the Daniel Boone chapter. We worked closely together, and when you see somebody of integrity like that, somebody who stands for the right thing, it's great to see that he's always standing up for our area. And then finally, I think our, I think our city attorney really came through today. I think Mike Pike usually nails the information that we need. He tells us, he tells us so, sometimes we are saddled with so much information, and we have so many options, but Mike really makes it concise so that we can figure out exactly where we're going. And I appreciate his humor, his honesty, his words of wisdom. He's always, he's always on top of stuff. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Jerry, and I'll settle up with you later.
Ms. Maria?
So, I was over at the tourism organization today, and I picked up next Monday, and Kelly gave me five tickets, and I want anybody of you that want to join, and we can make the Monday, Council, City, Radcliffe City Council volunteers for the tourism of Radcliffe. So, it's next Monday, I have five tickets for the council or anybody that comes from Radcliffe or anywhere to be with me.
They have to be positive about Radcliffe.
I have to be positive.
They have to be positive.
Okay, and then.
Not just anybody, Maria, positive.
Positive. And then I want to tell you that I know him, when he and his wife volunteered that bit of change, was it the Christmas dinner? I think it was the Christmas dinner. They helped pack food and distribute and everything. And when I heard the other day that he was gonna be the chief of the fire department, I have something to ask too, but not now. I will be visiting you soon. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Thank you again.
Well, what we want to, before we end, I just want to, and Jeff can attest to this, and I can as well, we're gonna take a photo of Chief, no, Chief Marsh, and we're gonna look at that in a few years to see if his hair color has changed. Because it's still pretty dark right now at his age, so. Yeah, you know, so Jeff and I can both tell you, it's gonna happen. And lastly, I'd like to wish, I think, Ms. Russo a happy birthday. She's a year younger than I am, so.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ashley. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, you all make the blush.
She did blush.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, last thing I'll just mention, we got Bourbon and Blades coming up, up there. That's gonna be September sixth up at Boundary Oak and Red Hill Cutlery. There's still ticket information, I think tickets, you can still buy some preferred seat tickets at Ticket, Ticketleap.com, Boundary, or Bourbon and Blades. Free show, I think you're gonna start really pushing the promotion out this week, and next week, we have a meeting with them tomorrow, or they're up to it, excuse me, they'll be pushing promotion out. So, next meeting is next Tuesday, August nineteenth, at five thirty here. We should have pretty much everything on the agenda. Any questions, just reach out to Ashley or myself. So, longer meeting than usual, but thank you all for being patient. Every once in a while, we gotta do these. So, I, well, we don't need a motion term, so that's it.
I'll make a motion.
Work session soon.
We're done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.